We've had to just record in the past and then post it afterwards, so.
Okay.
And it will be recorded as well.
I'll try to be on good behavior.
I just don't want anybody to be surprised.
I'm not calling my hair, so don't ask me. Have we heard from anyone who might not be here?
I did not, so I'm gonna assume no news is good news. Attendees.
Well, I see me and Mike and Jeff.
Regina's here as well.
Jeff Lehman. Regina is here?
Yeah, you can probably scroll down through your attendees someplace on the.
I was just looking at the boxes.
Yeah, and you can probably scroll through them someplace.
Regina's here and Jeff Nelson is here as well.
I'm here.
Do we get this to you Regina or not? Or do I have to wait for you to visit your mom and wave to you?
You have to wait for me to visit my mom and wave.
Is your mom okay?
Yeah, she's doing great, thank you. She's doing really well. Really well.
Okay, good to hear.
Yes, thank you.
I don't get to see her. I sometimes see you obviously stopping there, but.
Yeah, I think I still owe you a cupcake for my birthday, right?
I think you do, yeah. Where is it?
I don't know.
And Sunday was National Cupcake Day.
Was it really?
Yes. Oh, we don't get to see you Regina?
Okay, fine.
I miss you. See, that's so much.
Well, it is officially, well, 3:31 on my clock anyway, so we can kick things off.
Do we have a quorum?
We do.
Okay, and then Jeff Nelson, you're there?
Yes.
That we can't see you?
You can't?
No.
No.
What am I not doing right?
We can hear you.
Am I there now?
There you are.
There you are. With your blank wall.
I'm still learning how to use this.
Okay, well Regina has a very attractive background, so.
You wanna see the dolphins?
Oh yeah, my favorite table. No, that's okay. I'll have to come by and see you.
Okay.
I wanna see it in real again.
Okay.
All right, so apparently we have a quorum, so I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Jamestown City Planning Commission. Appears to be that we have three items on the agenda. First one is the city-owned lot bids. Second one is the Lutheran Home and Rehabilitation Center Greenhouse Project, and the third one is the historic archaic building adaptive reuse. Again, if you're not with the city hall staff, or you're not on the commission and you gotta speak, please identify yourself by name so that we know who's talking for the record. Jennifer, do you need addresses too from our speakers, or I can't remember?
I'm generally name and home address.
Okay, that's what I thought. You'd think I've never done this before. So yes, please give us your name and home address, and we'll just take these in order. And so the first one is the city-owned lots, and I was talking with Ellen the other day, because I wasn't sure how we were gonna do this, Crystal. If Ellen's gonna be presenting this stuff, or you're gonna be, I think it's Ellen, but.
Yep, I'm here for support, and I'd like to just take a minute if I may. Ellen to the planning commission and everyone who is joining us today. Ellen Shadle is our new principal planner. We're very excited to have her. She's been knocking it out of the park since the beginning of September, and today will be my last official planning commission meeting in at least a planning kind of capacity. Ellen will take over planning commission from here, and it's not that I'm going anywhere. I'm always accessible to anyone, but Ellen will take over principal planning duties, so I wanna welcome her, and I'm really excited to have her here. Ellen is going to run planning position-related items, and I'm here for moral support.
So, Crystal, was it something I said, or?
No, like you keep saying, I miss all of you.
Oh, let me just make sure I get this straight, so from time to time, you may not be here, because obviously you've got a lot of other stuff to do.
Yep, I'll be moving on from planning specific related duties to manage my director of development duties.
Well, and let me, before we go ahead first, thank you, Crystal. We went from the transition, we went through a lot of transitions. But we went from the transition from Bill Rice to you, and let me just say on behalf of the commission, if I can speak for them, that you did an excellent job.
Yeah.
It was a pleasure to work with you. I know we're not gonna stop working with you, but I missed our many chats about many subjects, including about a project that took us forever. So we spent a lot of time on the phone, and I just wanna say thank you. You did a great job, and it's not that I don't wanna welcome Ellen, it's just when you get older, I think change is harder, maybe, I don't know, but thank you, Crystal.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with all of you, and like I said, I'm still here, just in a different capacity, so.
Good, and I'm glad you welcomed Ellen, because I certainly should have done that as well, but Ellen and I had the chance to talk, I forget when, at one point on my porch, when she first came aboard, because I said, well, I think we oughta get together and talk. And she did, and we spent some time talking on my front porch, and then I called her, I guess, maybe last week, or emailed her and said, well, Crystal and I would usually discuss all the items to a certain extent before the meeting, and so Ellen and I discussed briefly some of the materials on Monday, because I was asking her some questions. So I wanna welcome Ellen to the commission and to Jamestown, and look forward to having a productive relationship as good as we did with Crystal and then Bill before you, so welcome Ellen.
Thanks.
So do you wanna take us, Ellen, to the first item on city-owned lots?
Sure, so the first item is the city-owned lots. One bid is for two lots on Springdale Avenue. And, excuse, yeah, two lots on Springdale Avenue. One is for, oh, sorry, it's a bid for the same lot by two different parties. And the one party has indicated that they're, that they, it's to be used as a side yard, it's their adjacent lot from their current residence. And the other applicant has no stated intended use for it. And the applicant whose property is adjacent to the vacant lot is offering $250, and the other applicant is offering $200. And I can, if more information is needed.
Yeah, is the intent on Springdale, that they would split it in half, and one would buy one half adjacent, the other one would buy the other half, or they tried to buy the?
Nope, these look like two different parties altogether.
With two different lots? Because it says on a lot, but.
Yeah, no, this is an application for the same lot.
Oh, okay.
So I'll just clarify real quick. There were two bids that were received. We're kinda past that point. The bid, there was a bid that was, typically when that happens, the highest bid is selected, so the cost of the bids is neither here nor there at this point. Really what we're looking at is the use of the lots and approving that that usage is okay with the planning commission, that that highest bidder is okay to move forward with purchasing the lot from the city.
So he.
And that goes for the second, the second properties as well on Norton. So when we get to that one, it's same scenario, approving that the use that is requested, which really is just an extension of the adjacent property. In both cases, the homeowners just really want to extend their property into the vacant lots that have been there, you know, next to their homes. And they'll, you know, in purchasing that, they'll take care of the lots and mow the lots, and that will no longer fall on, in certain cases, you know, the city to maintain, or an absentee person for us to try to hunt them down and get them to mow and take care of those lots, so. We're just kinda looking at adding property to an existing homeowner's property.
But there are four lots that we're dealing with on Norton?
Yep.
Yes, four adjacent lots.
Okay, and we've got bids from adjacent homeowners on all four?
No, it's one, well, the, so you'll see that the section block lot is 387, 1386 through 9, and the homeowner lives at 10.
So I'm sorry to be a little thick this afternoon, but the one person is trying to buy all four?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Same applicant for all four lots on Norton.
And it says co-applicants? Is that because it's like a spouse, or?
I'm, no, it says that the, the current resident on Norton, the co-applicant is her father.
Oh.
I can provide a little background on it, just because I've dealt with the, with the bid.
Sorry, I'm getting confused.
Okay, so on the Norton side, his daughter lives at 75 Norton. So heading up Norton toward Ohio Street, there are four lots in a row that are adjacent to 75 Norton, and he'd like to purchase those on his daughter's behalf. So that was his intent with them. He has no plans to develop the lot at this point into, you know, as far as putting a home.
So who would have title to the lots, the father or the daughter?
The father will become the owner.
Okay.
He would purchase them and pay the taxes.
Okay. Okay, I think it's clear to me. Did anybody else on the commission have questions, or are you okay?
I'd asked some questions earlier today of Ellen. I had visited both sites, and it was kind of interesting on Norton, because the property to the west of the house, or the, let's say the right side of it, is kind of a steep climb for a portion, and then grading with a lesser degree further up the hill. I was curious about what the idea was of purchasing it and for what purpose. And I can understand why they probably said no purpose, at least not defined at that time, but it's kind of an interesting situation where the house is set and how the topography is going to the west. But it doesn't, I don't see it as anything negative that they're taking it.
Right, so Jeff, did you get your questions answered then?
I think pretty much, yeah. You know, visiting the site made a difference too.
Right, and you have no problem with us recommending to go ahead with this?
Not that I can really think of, but I do have a deep curiosity as to how they're gonna treat it and what they're gonna do with it, but we, you know, it's not something you have to demand of the people, I don't think, but.
Well, and again, all we can do is recommend to the city council, because they have to agree to the sale. But as you know, if it's city-owned property, it has to go through us first. And anybody else on that mission, or Councilman Nelson, have a question?
No, I don't. We mentioned it last night in our meeting, but we, no one knows really exactly what their intentions are for the property, but.
Okay. And Ellen, is there a recommendation from the staff?
Recommendation is to grant, grant the applications.
Okay. Is there anything else from commission members, or anybody else?
I have a question. So what do we do about the one where there's two bids?
That will, I can answer that for you. The city council will approve. Generally, they go with the highest bid. What happens now is once the sale is approved, they will place a for-sale sign on the property, once the planning commission gives their okay, so that any other, you know, property owners in the area can have a chance to bid as well. It typically goes to the highest bidder.
Okay.
What's, what are the lot widths of the two adjacent landowners? Of their, of their lots?
On Springdale?
Yeah, are they just 50-foot lots, or are they greater?
Yours is an excellent question.
They are 50-foot, Jeff.
They're what?
They're 50-foot lots.
In a case like that, with both of them having a desire for it, I'll have to admit, one of the things that I thought about and suggested years ago, a property like that, it would be best to divide it and give it to each half of it. I think it would add more value to both properties in the long term, both for the owners and for the benefit of particularly taxing properties. I think it's a good, that would be a good deal for both landowners, for the adjacent landowners and the city. But that's just an opinion. It's what the people wanna do.
Yeah, and ultimately, it's up to what the council decides, but that recommendation, I'm sure obviously is certainly Councilman Nelson, and he's here, so.
I do feel it's an advantage for the city, though, to, long run, as we look at properties and how they contribute to the functioning of the city.
I'm not sure how often something like this happens. It's my first experience with two, you know, having a, two properties and people bidding on them, and I don't, I'm not sure about the tax advantage, or what, if we gain more on dividing it, and then it might be a question for the assessor. Or I don't mind seeing people getting into a bidding war, to be honest with you.
No.
Properties, so I'm okay with that.
My, my point in looking at it is how the properties develop, the lot size and the attractiveness for each to future buyers. Those are the things that affect the value of the properties. And the revenues that would go to the city. So that's why I look at it that way.
Well, that's, no, you're right to think of it like in those terms in the future. Jeff, you've done more homework on this than I have. I haven't been up past the Springdale, and, well, I have been to Springdale Avenue actually for other reasons, but not to see these two particular properties.
So at this point, we would just be recommending, based on a staff recommendation, that the city council sell the property. And then it's up to the council to work it out in terms of what they get, and whether that property is split, so.
Is it helpful at all if I show you the parcels and their relationship to the parcel that's being bid on?
Sure, I think so.
Okay. So can everyone see that?
I do now.
Okay, so here's 227, and here's 215, and here is the parcel in question.
Ellen, if you turn that on ortho, you'll be able to see where the buildings are, homes are.
Turn it on what?
The ortho on bottom right corner.
Bottom right corner.
You don't have to, I just.
I clicked on something, and this is what I got in the bottom right.
Ellen, if you go over to the left-hand side, the toolbar, and you see the stack that looks like paper or layers, that your layers, up one, nope.
Nope.
See this, the colorful layers? Yes, and then just select world imagery, and that will bring up the satellite.
Oh, great.
Nope, other one, down below.
Oh, thank you. There we go.
The adjacent ones actually have 100-foot lots then, right?
Yeah.
And you got that stood in the middle. But the one property is quite close to the line. Which of the two properties is the one that has the bid in, or has the high bid?
215.
Which one is that?
The left.
Oh, I see it. It's hard to read. It would surely be an advantage either way, for, biggest advantage, and the reason for it falls with the property at 215.
I'll just add, just for the sake of this discussion, the lot on the opposite side of 215 is also owned by the city. So they do have an opportunity, if that lot were to be something that were of interest to them to purchase. Whereas 227, really, their only option to expand their lot is that, that one in between them. So I'm just putting that out there. I don't know if that's something that the homeowners have discussed, or that they would be interested in at all. I don't wanna make that assumption, but that is city-owned.
Crystal, that's something I was gonna be recommending to the city council.
Oh, okay.
We've been maintaining that lot.
What were you gonna recommend, Jeff?
The other vacant lot that Crystal was referencing.
Right.
That we put a for-sale sign up there and try to get that off the, on the tax rolls.
Okay. All right, now that's not in our agenda.
It's not on the agenda, huh?
Okay. Were there any other questions or comments? So at this point, we would be recommending to the city council that they go ahead with selling the lot on Springdale and selling the lots on Norton Avenue.
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to that effect, please?
Removed.
That was moved by Jeff Lehman. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Was that you, Mike?
Yeah.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstaining, motion carries. Thank you very much. So let's go on to number two, the Lutheran Home and Rehabilitation Center Greenhouse Project, and I think Ellen, didn't you say to me right now this is, that's for information?
Yeah, yeah, so who are our representatives?
Hi, Ellen, this is Tom Holt. I'm the CEO of Lutheran, and joining me today are Jason Beckwith, who's our chief financial officer, and has been kind of the principal staff to the project to date, and Rex Tolman from our engineering firm, and Rob Simonetti from the architect firm. Are all online, and, and, yes, Greg, it was our understanding today, we're just introducing you all to the project. We've obviously been working with, with staff, you know, up to this point, and wanted to give you all an opportunity to put eyes on it and ask questions now before we progress too, too much further into the process.
Okay, well, thanks, Tom, and then for anyone who's gonna speak about this project for Jennifer's minutes, make sure that you state your name and home address for the record, please.
Okay. Tom Holt, 1365 Whitetail Lane, Jamestown.
So you're gonna start, Tom, or somebody else?
I think Jason Beckwith will pick up from there.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Jason Beckwith, 228, 2288 Sunnyside Road, Finley Lake, New York. Representing Lutheran, it's 715 Faulkner Street, Jamestown. What we are really proposing, can I share screen?
I should be able to.
Host disabled participant screen sharing.
Ellen, you'll have to just give him permission to do that.
And do you know where I go for that?
Go to the middle where it says share screen at the bottom of your, and then when you click on that, that should give him permission.
All right. PowerPoint? Okay, so as background, a year or so ago, we received a competitive New York State Transformation Grant for just shy of $6 million. And our original intention was to do modifications in addition to our current nursing home. And as part of the process, we looked at architect firms and ended up selecting SWBR, who really opened our eyes up to the world of greenhouse homes, if you will, and being a much more advantageous experience for residents living in a long-term care facility such as, such as our nursing home, and in lieu of really the traditional institutional infrastructure like our current facility has. As part of the transformation grant, we're looking at ways to benefit the community's long-term care service needs. And this just was one feature that we had not considered originally, that we felt really enhanced our campus and service offerings to the, to the community. So really what we're looking to do is construct four 12-bed, what's called greenhouse homes. SWBR has a lot of experience in developing these type of projects. So what I'm gonna do is walk you through a layout really of our campus, what a, what a home typically looks like, and then try to give you a view of really where our project is going. Just for background purposes, our current nursing home is certified for 148 beds, skilled nursing beds. We would be looking to just remove 48 beds from our current facility and place them into these four 12-bed greenhouses. And then within our current facility, on a phase two part of the project, we will then, you know, we'll have 100 residents at that time in our current facility, which frees up space for us to reconfigure some of our nursing home square footage of phase two project, which we'd come to city planning probably a year from now. But that would include enhancements to our subique area, dementia programming, and green space, and atrium space for residents, and stuff like that to really improve the experience for residents within the current facility. So if you will, we're looking at a total project for phase one and two of about $22 million. $6 million of it will come from the state. A million and a half will come from other foundation grants that we've, we have lined up. 2.5 million will come from our investments, our funded depreciates account, and the rest will be loan proceeds. So really, to walk you through a typical greenhouse, it, again, it has 12 beds, 12 private beds, all private bathrooms per home. And you can see here a floor plan layout of what a typical home would look like. It'd be about 6, or 8,000 square feet. So each home is self-contained. It really is to provide a home-like setting versus, you know, a traditional nursing home, if you've ever had the chance to be, you know, in a nursing home, not that there's anything wrong with a traditional nursing home. This is just gives an alternative option for residents to choose from. So you can see they generally share common spaces, such as a kitchen, dining room, a living room, or heart room, a den. There's some porches, front porch, side porch, and it gives really a great opportunity for residents to, you know, live in a home-like setting, visit with their staff, and then also, or visit with their family, and then also staff can get a little bit more involved in the day-to-day activities of the living arrangements of seniors in this type of facility, so staff can, can get involved with residents. So staff can, can get involved with residents and cooking and crafts and eat dinner with them. And so it really becomes a self-contained home and experience for, for the resident. I'll move on to the, to the next slide. This is, these are projects that SWBR has developed throughout the country. This is a typical, what a house would look like from the exterior. So as you can see, it's a very attractive-looking structure on the outside of the home. So ours would be somewhat similar in, in scale and quality to, to these, these houses you see presented there on this slide. The next slide is really an overview of our campus. If you can see my mouse moving around, this is where our current hundred and forty-eight bed facility is, where I kind of highlighted. Our assisted living programs is right there in the next square I've highlighted. And then properties that were really formerly GA, the Gustavus Adolphus Youth Program, are really the section that I have highlighted. For those who do or don't know, we, we have closed our institution and the school in February. And over the years, we had a group home here that we closed and tore down the house. We have a group home, a former group home here that has since closed a few years back. And then we had some office space and, and a home on, on this section of Margaret Street. So what we're really looking to do is utilize that, those properties and lands that formerly were GA to build these four twelve-bed greenhouses. So the next slide, again, will really just kind of capture a little clearer where our, our school is a, has an elementary wing and then a high school wing was constructed in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, newer wing. Now you can see the institution and then a group home. This house here had, was demolished a few years back. This office building was taken down last fall. So we are looking to remove this green, this group home, this section of the school, and this institutional building right here this fall. And, and with that, oops, sorry. With that, it highlights the, the properties in yellow that we would be looking to remove this fall. And then you can see in green, the two structures that we already removed. And then there's a parking lot that we would move in the spring when we go to construct the greenhouse homes. The next slide really is to plot on the property where we intend to have the greenhouse homes. You can see there are four. They would not be connected, but they would share a courtyard in the green area. So between one and two, you can see where there's a green, a green rectangular. That, that's a garden courtyard that the houses can share, which is secured. And then across the street, we have houses three and four with a similar courtyard situation. What we will try to do is modify the exterior roof lines of each house to make it work. So each house is unique versus having four exact structures, but the floor planes of each house will be, will be similar. What, what we'll do with it, where the institution is going to be removed, that will turn into, for the most part, as we have in our plans right now, green space. We will keep our existing parking lot over here for staff that exists. And then the housing, the parking for the housing, we will need to accommodate is for visitors, EMS and fire truck movement through our, through the facility. We've reviewed this on a few occasions with Crystal, Jeff, and Larry, just the, over the last year or two, as we had really been finding this out to try to get her, to try to get the project right for the community and, and this, you know, particular block of, of our campus. Really, we're trying to enhance the, you know, the community feel, really, and expand out our senior services in, into that area as we move really away from, from the children's priority. Really what we wanted to do is put this in front of you with the hopes of really putting a formal application together for the November seventeenth meeting where we will obviously bring the more detailed design documents that are required, you know, to meet the city planning review and approval. So our, really, our hope was to just give you an orientation, high-level orientation of what our, our project is and, and the direction we're heading, just to see if there were any questions or comments. And then when it comes in front of you in November, we'll have already kind of covered this legwork. So we're not spending time orienting you with really our project. Or the hope is really we can give you that orientation today and then we can really focus more on the details of the project and what, you know, the city would be looking, you know, for from us. If, if not, what we present at the time is not what you are looking for. But if, if there is an opportunity now to field some of those questions or concerns, we can clearly address those in our submission for the November meeting.
Well, I, I appreciate you coming to us and the staff ahead of time. What's going to happen to that other school building there at the top? Is that going to be just closed off? Are you going to be using it for anything?
Nope.
Yeah, Greg, this time, yeah. We, we continue to operate, you know, services through, through GA, our foster care program and a number of community-based services. And, and that, it's anticipated that that will continue in, in that location as it has been since the residential and school buildings closed earlier this year.
So.
I have a question. Is that the building where there's the gym? Excuse me, Greg. I just wonder. I know there's a basketball court and there's, and it, it's fairly seemed like a newer facility last time I was there.
Yeah, that, that, that opened up in, in the early nineties. And, and so, so that, 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 that wing, you know, lent itself, you know, better to, to reuse. And so the gym facility, the cafeteria spaces are, are, are in that, are in that facility that you recall.
And that's where you're going to continue to provide some form of youth services?
Correct.
Okay. And then another question I had, have, have you made any attempt to meet with any of the immediate neighbors? Because that's such a small tucked-away neighborhood. And I'm just wondering how the neighbors feel about this change.
We, we, we haven't yet specifically, Greg. We certainly anticipate after this discussion, there, there, there may be some, some additional outreach to it. It, it, it's always kind of the challenge, you know, when, when, you know, when do you reach out? We're, we, in, in terms of impacted, directly impacted neighbors, there, there really only is, you know, one at this point. Not that that's insignificant, but there's the one parcel, Jason, if you just highlight, that, that's up there. That's, that's the only parcel in, in that adjacent lot that, that we currently don't own.
Is that still a private home?
Yeah.
But then I'm thinking even of the houses along Margaret and Niagara up to Bar, and the ones are very close. From my previous incarnation as a council member, Tom, you might remember, I would often hear people suggesting problems across the street.
Right.
I'm just thinking of heading it off at the pass. Maybe it would be good to somehow let the neighbors know that this is what you're proposing. I, I gotta believe they're going to say it's a good idea, but
Yeah.
I think it would be really helpful if those most immediate neighbors were somehow notified.
Yep, Greg, I agree. We certainly will, will endeavor to do that prior to, to the November meeting. Again, we wanted to have the conversation today to make sure that there wasn't something, you know, beyond these types of issues that, that you would want us to address before, before we came out to you folks. So we'll, we'll certainly do that.
Okay. And the other question I would have about whether or not this would affect traffic up and down Gustavus Avenue and if it would cause a problem for first responders having these projects along Gustavus.
Yeah, so I, I'd say two things to that, Greg. You know, one, the objections that we've had historically with regard to traffic flow on Gustavus Avenue were, were, you know, almost if not entirely limited to the traffic that we had primarily with bus traffic associated with the school facility, you know, obviously all, all of which is no longer the case. So, so the, the issues that have been kind of longstanding concerns for, for the folks in that area, you know, have, have really been eliminated. Part of our discussions have been and will continue to be as we refine, you know, this planning is to, is to work with the folks at the city to ensure that there continues to be proper access for first responders, for fire, you know, that, that's always been a critical part of this review process that we've gone through.
Yeah, especially because the neighborhood is somewhat isolated, because, I mean, there's more than one way to get up there, but it's tucked away in its own little piece of the world. And then the employees will park in the parking lot that you identified behind, yeah.
Yeah, the, the only, the only parking that would be anticipated now is, is really, you know, family members that are coming in to, 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 to visit. And, and then again, if there were to be any emergency vehicles or those types of things that would be coming in, it, it's not expect, it's not anticipated, it's not, it's not, it's not desired by us to have staff parking anywhere other than the main lots.
Okay.
From a, from a traffic standpoint, hopefully elimination of school buses and all the, all the school staff we had, you know, upwards of forty school staff that were parked back here in this, this lot. And then we have this parking lot here where institutional staff park. You know, those, those in essence are gone along with the school buses. And then currently nursing home staff are all directed to park in this parking lot here, which they generally comply with. So they will continue to be parked, there'll be less, obviously less employees in this facility and new employees in the four houses we built, but they will all be directed to park in as they do today. And then again, the only thing we would really, we would have all those subtractions from traffic. The only addition we would have would be obviously for visitors, other residents, and then the EMS and fire truck staff, which they were very frequent visitors of the institution and the school. So it might be an addition by subtraction at, at the end of the day.
Okay. Well, I think I asked my questions. Anybody else on the commission have a question, or questions?
No, I think, I think it was well-covered.
I just had a, just one question about, can you expand on the greenhouse? And what that entails to be, is this like lead credits or is it?
No, the, the term, the term greenhouse is, is, it's a trademark name that, Rob can probably speak better too than, than I can, but it's a, it's a, it's a branded name of project that was created by a gentleman maybe twenty years ago in order to create alternative levels of living versus, you know, the traditional nursing home. And I'm just working on some stuff for the Department of Health right now and, and I pulled some stuff up. But really the benefits, the benefits that are highlighted on a case study from the greenhouse project, you know, include overall infection control, improved quality of life for the resident, quality of care, improved family satisfaction, staff satisfaction, higher direct care time received, increased engagement, less stress on the staff and residents, less staff turnover, improved care outcomes, and things that people can relate to in today's world or, or, whoops, my lights shut off. Coronavirus or COVID cases. Recent studies by the University of North Carolina have shown that there are about three hundred greenhouse projects across the US. There are drastically reduced amounts of COVID-nineteen cases in, in these type of settings versus traditional nursing homes. And it really relates to an infection control that can be done inside these houses versus a traditional facility.
All right, so there's a stronger correlation to quality of life as opposed to environmental?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else have a question? So you anticipate being able to come back at the November meeting with a site plan?
Correct. Yeah, we, we wrapped up our schematic, or we're in the process of wrapping up our schematic case that we should be in line to provide all the details you would need.
Right. And of course, obviously, you're working with the staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've been real helpful.
Good. Anybody else have a question for this project? Okay, well, I guess we'll look forward to seeing you again in November. It'll be, it'll be my birthday that day, so make the plug. Feel free to bring presents, although I might be constituting a bribe, so better not do that.
Well, thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you. So I guess we can move on to number three, the historic Arcade Building Adaptive Use. And again, Ellen, that's just for information at this point.
Correct, yep.
Who's going to be speaking on that project?
Adam, are you going to be leading that up?
Hi, Crystal. Hi, everyone. My name is, yes, Adam Driscoll. I'm one of the development managers with home leasing. Just wanted to thank everyone for allowing us to share and introduce ourselves a little bit and also share some of the work we're doing with regards to the Arcade Building.
Adam, can I interrupt you and just ask you for your home address for the record?
Oh, sure. It's eighteen Fallwood Terrace, Hilton, New York.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So just, I also have two of my colleagues, Brett Garwood, who's our CEO of home leasing, and Jennifer Higgins, who is a development manager as well on our development team. And we, all three of us have been working together on the Arcade Building up to this point. So just, just a little bit about home leasing. We have right now, I think, a hundred and eighty-eight employees. Correct, Brett? Yep, as of Monday, from what I heard. Twenty-five communities throughout New York State and one in Maryland and one in Pennsylvania as well with about twenty-three hundred residential units. We have been in existence, I think now since two thousand and six and just have been really focused on our company mission, which is to improve the lives of our residents in the communities that we build. We have a development team, we have a general contracting team, and also our property management team. So it's, it's a nice advantage to have as a company because we're obviously in the beginning stages, we can control the construction, and then also we're a long-term neighbor because our, our communities, when we build them, were there for between thirty to fifty years, depending on, on the community. So it's very important to us to be a good neighbor and wanting to really integrate ourselves into the, into the communities that we're, we, we built. So that's, that's just a kind of a quick synopsis about home leasing. Brett or Jen, I don't know if there's anything additional that in the introductory?
Yeah, I'm, I'm Brett Garwood. I'm CEO of home leasing and I'm at three hundred Dale Road in Rochester. And I think the only, some other context is, you know, we're a family-owned company. We're for-profit, but we're very mission-oriented. And one of the things that got us into thinking about the Arcade Building is a couple of things. Is first, we really have a passion for finding important historic buildings that are kind of in a situation where they're either going to get saved or they're not going to be able to be saved. We've done this several times in many other communities. But also, we're active locally. We have been working with the town of Faulkner to help rebuild their downtown, which, as you probably know, have had experienced a series of fires. And we've got a project that we're hoping to move forward in the coming months there. So we'd like to do other important community development-minded projects in the area.
Or anything else before we start asking questions? That you think we ought to hear?
Would you like us to walk through the project a little bit as it is right now? Maybe?
Yeah, that would be, that would be great.
Adam, do you want to share your screen so that you can show some of those slides or I can? I have them up.
Yep, I can. Yep, I can, uh, that makes sense, let me just pull it up here. So, um, we've spent quite a bit of time, um, with doing some feasibility studies, uh, with regards to the building itself, um. I'm not sure if everybody, uh, had, has a chance, had a chance to look at the, um, the information we, we had shared, um, but the inside, or if you've been inside the building, the inside is in, um, pretty rough shape. Um, we did a, uh, laser scanning, which is how we were able to, uh, develop this, um, uh, interior rendering as a proposed idea of, um, bringing it back to life, but, it, it, if you haven't been in the building, it really has an, um, an unbelievable, uh, presence when you walk in, there's just, it's, it's, got so much potential, it's obviously in very rough shape, but, um, something that may scare a lot of people away. For us, it, uh, we've, we've done many of these and, and actually get excited about it once we walk in the, in the door and, and see the, the great potential. The floor plan was also, uh, included in, um, the second page here. And, and it is definitely a unique shaped type of building, um, so there's a lot of, nooks and crannies and space challenges, but, um, we spent a lot of time, talking through and working with our, um, architect CJS, um, to really kind of try to take advantage of the spaces as best as possible. Um, we, we would definitely have it, um, become fully ADA accessible by, um, having an elevator, a new, a full new elevator, um, obviously in the building and, uh, some ADA units and, uh, as mentioned, everything fully ADA inside. Um, and at our current proposal was, uh, having the entrance and lobby, um, on the side of the building, actually right now where the, uh, I, I think it's been cleaned up quite a bit there, but where the one building had, um, burned down and demolished. We were thinking that, uh, having the side entrance there, because then we could put the elevator and an additional stairway, um, located on the, on the side as well, but it's roughly, um, from what we've garnered here is about thir, is thirty-six units. Uh, thirteen studios, twenty-three one bedrooms, uh, is currently where, uh, we see the, the, the unit count.
You don't happen to have any, uh, drawing of it? I guess there's no, no typical apartment shape here, because they're all so different. But you don't have any, uh, floor plan for one of the apartments, either studio or one bedroom? At this point?
At, at this point, we don't, I don't think it would be too hard to, um, at, we could ask, uh, our architect to, to give a couple of, uh, um, versions of what they, what the floor plan would look like. Um, it's usually, uh, between, for a one-bedroom would be between six hundred and seven hundred and fifty square feet, I believe, is the, um, the square footage requirements that, uh, HCR, uh, sets and then, um, studios are up, they're, well, six hundred to five hundred, I believe, um, but.
Yeah, we have, we have pretty typical, you know, floor plans, so there's gonna be some unique units here. Uh, we could also show you some, um, images of, of comparable projects that we have and what the, what the units look like, but, um, there'll be very high-quality units, uh, we, uh, we would welcome anybody to visit our properties to get a sense of them. There'll be high-quality finishes and, uh, we, we try to create really nice layouts that are appealing and might be, the, the kind of product that might not exist a lot in downtown Jamestown.
Do you have any, uh, projects, uh, not too far away from Jamestown that if somebody wanted to go visit it, they could?
Um, depends on your definition of not too far, I guess, um, um.
All right, let's put it this way, what's the,
Yeah, we have lots in the Rochester area, um, uh, one outside of Erie, actually, we might be the closest one in Jamestown.
Okay. And I, I think I heard Adam earlier mentioned, uh, you said you, your organization did a feasibility study?
Um.
Or somebody else did, or?
Pardon me?
Or somebody else did, I wasn't quite sure.
Um, feasibility with regards to, um, measuring the inside laser scanning, we've done some environmental reports, uh, phase one, phase two reports. Um, having our, uh, construction, uh, team walk through the building and just really start to digest, um, you know, any type of, um, uh, all, all the items that would, you know, that they run into with regards to construction, so just, uh, in, in the assessment period at this point.
Yeah, we certainly haven't completed that process, that's one of the reasons we wanted to come and talk with you. Um, we, we were, we're kind of in a place right now where we're gonna spend, you know, a lot of time and, uh, a lot of money to further evaluate this building. Uh, what, what's been done so far is kind of a fit analysis, right? Um, so that we can have an understanding of, well, what could we create so that we can start to, cost out what it would take to create what we envisioned, so we wanted to get some early feedback, um, from this group, um, and kind of talk about process and some other issues before we, you know, spend six months and, uh, a lot of time and money, uh, uh, figuring out, uh, how to move this forward.
Well, and, uh, you know, given our past experience with some projects, uh, I welcome you coming to us this soon in the project.
Yeah, we'd rather talk to you often than, um, often throughout a long period of time as opposed to lots in stressful meetings near the end of what we hope the process will be, yes.
All right, it could, it could avoid a whole lot of problems, and some of my fellows on the commission know where I speak, so. So at this point, have you done any kind of market study as to whether, uh, these units would, people would want them? Or are you planning to?
We, we, we haven't done, uh, an official market study, but, uh, I, I don't think our, our concerns are the market, right? I mean, I think we're creating, um, very high-quality housing in a really unique building, uh, in, uh, a da, a part of downtown Jamestown where it'll be very special and something that doesn't, uh, doesn't quite exist, in the market right now, so I don't think our problem, we'll also price it very affordably because of the way that we will finance this project, so I don't think our issue is, uh, demand for the units. Our concern is gonna be, how much does it cost to create this, given the conditions of the property? And the sources of funding that we can access and can we make those, um, uh, can we kind of, it, it's more of a math problem about costs versus reality of funding. Um, but in terms of market, I, I, I don't have any fear that, uh, this wouldn't, wouldn't lease up, uh, quite quickly.
I, so, but let me see if I can, uh, rephrase the question, are you planning to do a market study? I, I understand.
Absolutely, we'll be required to do a market study, absolutely.
Because, um, you know, I, one of the reasons, of course, for discussing this with the commission, the staff, is that I like to think we know something about our local market and, uh, while I appreciate your optimism about being able to get these rented, because they'll be of high quality, uh, I think a market study, and, and you guys know this, is absolutely essential.
Yeah.
Um, a, and let me also just say that this building, uh, has been something that I think I can speak for most people in Jamestown. That for a very long time, we've been wanting to see it developed rather than torn down. Uh, because I think it would be a striking addition to downtown Jamestown and would take care of a building that has caused us, no end of concern, so I, I, I think I could speak for the commission that we would be really excited if we could make this project work. Uh, but let me, uh, just bring up maybe two more things and then I'll, uh, turn it over to my fellows, but, uh, one of my concerns is, uh, it's what, thirty-six units?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, what are we gonna be doing about parking?
So, um, one of the, um, discussions and, that we've had with, uh, with, uh, Crystal and Larry, um, was, was, was parking and we were hoping, um, if this was to, um, to progress, that, there would be, um, an easement, uh, allowed in the rear of the building where there's, um, some parking spaces, in the back there that, um, is owned by, by the city. Um, so we'd be looking to, um, make some improvements there and hopefully be able to utilize some of the, the parking in the back and then also, um, if needed to, um, to see, because we have to analyze how, how many parking spaces would be available in the back and then, also to see, um, I believe there's some parking on the street and also there was a garage across the street. If we have thirty-six units, um, and depending on, um, the population, it could be, uh, sixty percent, fifty percent utilization, uh, vehicle utilization based on number of units, so, um, it could be, we would be looking at roughly, uh, fifteen to twenty parking spaces, uh, to, to serve our, to serve the community. Um, but that's, that's where we're, uh, where we've had, uh, early discussion.
And, and there is that parking structure across the street on Main Street fairly close that I think you can leave spaces, but, I think that's certainly something that we need to take into account, especially in a city like ours, where the public transit is, it's there, but it's minimal, um, and so, um, a lot of people are very card-dependent and there's a few things you can walk to downtown, um, but not that many. Um, but my other question would be also, you're right next to the railroad track, which doesn't get a lot of use, uh, but it does, and it looked like on that drawing, um, near the railroad track and maybe in the back there was like green, is that meant to be like green space, maybe, trees and plantings, or am I misinterpreting the map?
Where the, where the, uh, previous building had been, uh,
Yeah, where that little building was torn down.
Yes, so, um, I'm sorry, I took the screen off, I can do it again, um. That is the plan, actually, um, i- if, if, uh, again, if the project was to progress and we were able to, um, uh, acquire the, the land, which I believe is owned by the city, um, this, we would turn this into green space. And then, um, there is some elevation challenges here, um, this is not by any means, please, uh, don't think that it's final, so, we've had a lot of discussions about, um, you know, with the, if there would be a ramp here or not, but yes, that would be the plan is to, definitely put some landscaping, um, some green space and, um, also some areas to, um, you know, for seating and maybe some tables, but, that would be activated by our main entrance there as well.
And that's, that's considerably below grade, the, the train, as you know, which is way above there, so that would, I think the way the residents would tend to use this is if they had a car. Our hope is that they would park behind the building in the parking lot that we would improve as part of the project. And they would enter through that green space, you know, it's not, um, it's not huge, but, uh, that green space. And if they were coming off the street, we also accommodate an entrance right off the street on the main entrance there, um, and you could just walk into the building.
Yeah.
Did, uh, anybody in your staff have a chance to read, uh, the neighborhood plan for the city of Jamestown at this point yet? I mean, maybe this is so preliminary, you haven't done that yet. And it's okay if you haven't, because I appreciate the fact that you've come to us so early.
Um, isn't there, I don't, I don't know if that's the downtown revitalization?
Well, there's the urban design plan, which is for downtown specifically, and then there's the comprehensive neighborhood plan, both of which have been incorporated into Jamestown comprehensive plan. So at some point, I would make sure that you take a look at all three, but one of the reasons I'm bringing up the comprehensive neighborhood plan, is because it caused us a lot of heartache, heartburn and anguish over a recently approved project. Um, because, a, and again, this links to, uh, the market study. One of our concerns and it's identified in the plan is that at this point, Jamestown, uh, simply has way too much housing, considering that our community, um, is not really growing, I, I don't wanna say that we're declining, I, I, I hope not, but, um, you, you know, we just completed the census, um, our community, even the whole county, isn't really growing. And Jamestown's got a serious problem in that we have way too much housing and not enough demand and, um, you know, years ago, this was maybe twenty years ago, I wrote an article for the paper about how we don't even have a housing market, it's so dysfunctional, because the, uh, demand, um, or I should say the supply so outweighs the demand, that it's pressing down the prices of those of myself and others on the commission who are homeowners. Uh, and it's one of the reasons why housing is cheap in Jamestown, one of the reasons. Is because we simply have too much, uh, and so every time, we're not against saving this wonderful building, we're not against adding new units, because some of the housing is substandard and we do, you know, our housing is also extremely old. Um, but every time we add new units, and we did this with that recently complete, uh, completed project, the neighborhood plan calls for a substantial decrease in the existing housing supply, so, in order to add new units, uh, any project has to address what units are gonna be removed from the market. And I don't want you to be caught by surprise with that, and, and that's something, at least while I've been here with the commission, and I'm at least here for a little over a year, I think, um, the commission has been pretty, uh, adamant about, you know, we've got too much, it's depressing prices, it's hurting the market. And while we wanna save the building and we're not against new units, there has to be some sort of effort to balance out, adding new units by re, removing existing units, and.
Yeah, and then actually that, that, uh, policy, um, or, or that, uh, information that we read about and, and Crystal mentioned it as well, was one of the reasons we wanted to come to you early, because we would really like to understand what that means to you. And it actually worries us considerably to have to, uh, uh, in addition to the astronomical costs of this building to, also have to mitigate, um, the larger vacancy issue in Jamestown.
And I, yeah, I'm, I'm glad to have that discussion with Crystal, it doesn't surprise me that she mentioned it, uh. And I appreciate, I really appreciate you coming here early, I really appreciate you trying to save a building that we all would love to save. I, I understand that you have concerns about the neighborhood plan calling for mitigation. Uh, but I, I don't want that to be a surprise and I think, unlike that other project where we seem to be dealing with it at the end, because for whatever reason, the project sponsors just seem to wanna like sidestep it, um. We, we might as well be upfront and say, we gotta deal with it, now, what exactly does that mean? Well, the, the neighborhood plan doesn't say, if you build a new unit, you gotta remove an existing unit, but it has to be part of the discussion around this project. And, um, again, I wanna encourage you to, to move forward with this, but I wanna make sure that you're aware of that, because it, it isn't just me, it's other members of the commission, maybe all of the members of the commission. I'm not gonna speak for them, they, they certainly can speak for themselves, but I just wanna let you know, we, we wanna encourage this, but we want you to be aware of our concern.
Sure.
That we have here, so.
And I'd like to, you know, advance those discussions, I mean, we can, we can talk now, because I think we need to put, we need to have an understanding, like I, I'm aware of the, the, the other projects you're mentioning and the scale of the mitigation, I can tell you that, that is, I, I, if, if the scale of the mitigation that was required for that project would be placed on this project, we know that it would be unacceptable, we couldn't, we couldn't do it, right?
Yeah, I understand, but that was, that was a much bigger project.
Oh, totally, absolutely.
Um, so if we can start this discussion right away, I think we can, uh, make this work if we all think it's in the right, best interest of the city. And we can avoid long contentious discussions, I mean, I won't, you know, we could write a book about that project. Uh, maybe when I retire, I'll, I'll write a book about that project, but, um, which is coming sooner than, than I wanna think about, but I just, I'm trying to be very upfront with you guys, because I really appreciate you stepping in here this early and, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, thank you, yeah, yeah.
And, and then I'll stop asking questions and, and, uh, turn it over to, uh, my colleagues on the commission to see what else they would like to add or ask about.
Has there been any?
Yes. Go ahead, Jeff.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. Has there been any studies, especially with regards to handicap people? And stuff as to the how that is in effect with the market and what they propose to do?
In terms of the need for accessible housing, I think the way that we've designed this is there's two things that's driving it. One is a few things that are driving it. One is code, right? If we're going to do this type of investment, code, building code is going to require us to to have a level of accessibility. The second is funding. We're going to seek funding through New York State Homes and Community Renewal. And they'll require a certain amount of funding, or excuse me, excuse, certain amount of accessibility. And then once you do that, right, you're already at an elevator. So you you might as well, when you're essentially building, you make it everything visitable and adaptable. So that doesn't matter who the resident is, right? They may have a friend, they may have a neighbor, they'll be able to at least visit all these units and but we tend to do at least, Jen, you're probably the expert on this, a percentage of fully accessible unit, ten percent? Of fully accessible units. But that those units are, if we don't have the demand for that number of units on day one, they're available to people who don't require the amenity of being accessible and they work perfectly fine.
Anything else, Jeff, before I go to Mike or?
Not really, but the market here, though, I agree, has changed tremendously. And I've got to hit that point now where I've watched it over a lot of years and working through it. And it's having a substantial impact. At the same time, there's a lot of needs for people that hadn't been covered way back when either. And it's part of what we're doing now and projects like yours and others. So it's a, it's kind of a blend of two different problems.
And you know, one of the things that we are working to do and hope to accomplish here is you know, we're creating a type of unit that doesn't quite exist, you know, these beautiful historic adaptive reuse properties. So whether you, even though you have a soft market, which is common in upstate New York, you know, creating something that doesn't exist helps create the vitality that you want, just simply creating no new units, as you know. Serve nobody and it doesn't accomplish a lot if you're trying to revitalize the downtown. But we also are working to identify a veterans partner. And we hope to have a portion of these units that are available to to veterans as well as part of the affordable housing component. So that's you know, I know Jane, my my wife's from Jamestown. I have some family in Jamestown. There's a very big population of veterans in in Jamestown, and I think we're going to try to meet that need. Try to partially meet that need anyway with this project. I don't think we mentioned that in our description.
Sorry, were you done, Jeff, or?
Yeah, I was just saying, a lot to think about.
Right. And Mike, you had a question?
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions. What were the rental prices again for the studios and the one bedrooms?
We haven't arrived at the final rental prices because we haven't done a market study, but Jen, you, we can tell you what the maximum prices would be, right? So you're gonna, I think we're going to be looking at the in the six hundreds likely, right?
For the studio?
Yeah, it could probably be five fifty to six hundred for the studio. And probably six hundred to six fifty for a one bedroom.
And that would include utilities, right, Jen?
One of the things that home leasing does is we like to have a single price. Everybody has a predictable housing cost. And so that would include utilities.
Are any of those subsidized in any way?
If we did a veterans component, it's likely that we that would come with a rental subsidy to help make it affordable for the veteran. And in fact, that that would be our goal.
So I guess
We're not planning on we're not, but we're not, this isn't a a public housing or a section eight project based subsidized property. It's a workforce property that might have some rental subsidies for veterans.
So your target renter is, can you like describe your target renter?
So we're likely to have, this will be a workforce or affordable housing project, so it'll have some income regulations. It'll probably have regulations for portion of the units at fifty percent of the area median income and some at sixty percent of the area median income, which will probably get you into the high twenties for a one bedroom or a one person household. So this would be a very common income for a large portion of the population here. Jen, you might have those specific numbers. What's a?
Yeah, so a two bedroom or a two person household that's sixty percent of the area median is thirty two thousand and change. And a two person household at fifty percent is about twenty seven thousand.
And those are two bed, or sorry, you said two family? Two person?
So income limits are calibrated based on the number of people in the household.
Okay, so, all right.
So for some context, you know, if somebody's working minimum wage full time, they will be well below those income requirements.
All right, and then I on on your website, you say part of your mission is to improve the lives of the residents. And one of your core values is commitment to community. Can you give a few examples other than just housing people, what home leasing has done to to fulfill those that mission?
Oh, thanks for noticing that. So well, I'll I'll give some examples. You guys can think of others. One of the things that's just common for every community we do is we have a certain amount of amenities and community room. And we have one of the reasons we want a certain number of units in, you know, the Jamestown area, if we were to do Falkner and this property is, you know, we have full time employees and more employees, so they can work more closely with our residents and drive amenities and services to the residents and make our community room available for for community use. So if there's a neighborhood meeting, if there is a of a club, if there is other things like that, we we don't want our community room to just be there. And people sit there if they're residents, we want it to be utilized. Some of the things that we've done for residents is we make sure that they have food resources. We make sure they have health resources during the the pandemic, we've helped people, you know, sit down and help people with the unemployment requirements and forms. So we we try to take a personal stake from a property management point of view. From a company point of view, you know, we've been involved in you know, we want more to happen, you know, around the communities in which we work. So we want to be a real resident of of Jamestown and be participants in the community development planning and you know, the work that you want to do is a, you know, this is part of a puzzle that you're trying to put together in downtown Jamestown. So we want to do more. I don't know, Adam and Jen, do you have anything else?
We host at a couple of our properties Thanksgiving potluck dinners. So bringing people together. And I think we host some Boy Scout meetings and some of our community rooms, things like that.
And can I just ask you for the record to give your full name and home address?
Sorry, it's Jennifer Higgins and I'm at forty seven Sher Oaks Drive, Pittsburgh, one four five three four.
Thank you.
Yes.
So you have full time staff there during all hours or just certain hours?
Certainly not twenty four seven, but we would have we would have a maintenance supervisor or maintenance technician and a property manager. At thirty six units, it may not be forty hours for each of them, but it would be probably thirty hours. So we would have fairly regular office hours. We also have, you know, twenty four hour line for, you know, emergency repairs and things like that, or emergencies that might come up. But we won't, we won't certainly won't have twenty four hour staffing, but we'll have regular business hours.
Is there any liaison with our social services and stuff?
Yeah, certainly. The community leader would work very carefully with residents. And if they have needs, try to make connections and try to, you know, the community leader may be part of neighborhood groups or community associations so that she can be enforced, she or he can be informed of of things. If we have a service component for veterans, there will be a much higher level of staffing as well because that would come with staffing of their own. So there would be additional people who would not just provide services to their the veterans who might be there, we would work with that organization to at least make basic informational resources available for for our whole all of our residents.
If you look at the the building plans that Adam shared on the first floor, so the street level, there's a light green office space that's noted on the front of the building. And the intent for that space is that it would be office space for the support service provider.
Can you email the addresses of the your other project places in Rochester and Erie?
Sure. Yeah. And and I think one of the things we provided was actually our corporate resume, which had all of our properties. I believe the addresses are on there.
That was that was sent via email. That wasn't
You know, one of the things I think I'll send is we could send an email that talks about some of the properties that are most comparable to this one, right? And that might give you some direction because there's a lot of them. We just finished a senior property in Holly, New York, which is oh, gosh, forty minutes west of Rochester. And that was a vacant school building that had been vacant for twenty or more years in real distress. That's that's a property that I'd look at as comparable property. And in Rochester, we did something called the Eastman Dental Dispensary, which was in horrifyingly awful condition. We've got two other former Catholic schools that had been vacant for a long time and that are under construction right now, one in Schenectady, one in Syracuse. So there's a few projects that I would say are really good examples. And then Batavia, New York, we're under construction with a new property that is a veterans property that I think programmatically would be the most like this one.
Do you have any, though, that are like historic properties in old downtowns like ours? Yeah.
Yeah, the 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 Holly project is a perfect example of that. It's in a, it's in a, it's a smaller community. It's in a village, but it is right in the middle of downtown Holly, New York. We're also working on, it hasn't been funded yet, but a project in Seneca Falls that was a historic East Factory made automobile dealership. Sure not, but an important building on some of the I think that's on the state's seven most important to preserve buildings, not unlike the arcade building, I think is listed on one of those lists.
Yep. And and all
I I'm sorry to interrupt anyone. I just want to jump in and just let you know that we're coming up to the end of our time in terms of the time earmarked on Zoom. So I just didn't want anyone to get cut off unexpectedly. So I'm just in terms of kind of how to direct that.
So we timeout at five o'clock, Ellen?
Yeah.
It's like being in class.
It won't actually cut us off, but I think just trying to be cognizant of everyone's time.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, you're okay, Ellen. It's okay. It won't shut us off. We have stopped live streaming, but we are still recording, so.
I I just want to make sure we have time for all these questions because I really appreciate you coming up to us this early.
Yeah, I'm happy to stay for as long as you
There's already a lot of questions, so.
I just wanted to to just add to the the historic component, too, is that all of those projects mentioned and including this one would be through the historic tax credit program through SHPO. So there's, there's a lot of different guidelines that need to be followed. And we're very familiar with that. And the end result is just a beautiful beautiful building. But I just want to make sure everybody knew that we were following the historic tax credit guidelines.
Mike, I didn't, did we cut you off or were you done?
No, I'm I'm good. I think I agree with Greg earlier, who, you know, he's talked about housing mitigation and and some of the challenges that we face in Jamestown. And I'm glad he brought that up. You know, I'm also you know, just want to make sure that there is some sort of social aspect in here to really help the residents who who are living there if they need it and just so they have access to to some support. And that's, but I don't have any more questions.
Did anybody else have a question for the project sponsors?
No.
I had a couple of questions, Greg. Thank you, guys, for being here. Like, like Greg and Mike said, thank you very much for bringing this project to the city. It's very exciting to me and I know it is to the other, the other members of the commission as well. I generally would love to see this building redeveloped. It's a great building and and I think something needs to be done very soon or else we may lose it forever. So thank you, guys. I wanted to ask, and a lot of great questions have been asked already, but I also wanted to ask, you spoke a little bit about financing and it sounds like you're going to be pursuing historic tax credits. Are you also pursuing low income housing tax credits? And and could you let us know what other types of financing you're you're going to be pursuing?
Yeah, I I think a property in in this condition requires the combination of historic tax credits and low income housing tax credits. And that's the income information that Jen was providing earlier are driven by the low income housing tax credit program. So other sources of funding that we might search for are other funding available through New York State Homes Community Renewals. They have some kind of subsidy sources, housing trust funds. It's it's possible we look to see if there's any opportunities through the regional council that might help us. You know, and we'll always ask for some local home funds or something like that to help us to the degree that they're available. But the kind of ninety five percent of the funding is going to come from historic tax credits, low income housing tax credits and the other HCR resources.
Okay, thank you. And I think that your at least preliminary decision to focus on the veteran community is commendable. I think that's a great idea. And I have, I have some, I'm not a veteran myself, but I have some connections in the veteran community locally that may be of some assistance to you when the time comes. So
Now, we'd love to talk to you more because actually we're looking for some good partnerships and we really appreciate connections.
Excellent. Yeah, I'd be happy to help with that. And maybe we can talk with Crystal and and company and and put you in touch with the right people. The other question I had was more general. I was just wondering, from your perspective, I'd be interested in in knowing at this point, what do you see as the the greatest challenges to being able to bring this project to fruition?
I think that's easy. It's going to cost a lot of money to save this building. It's going to be really expensive. And we have to be able to raise the funds necessary to be able to pay for the costs saving the building. You know, there's some you know, the 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 reasons for it aren't good, but the timing might be good. There is a lot of talk at the state level and the national level about doing some things as part of economic stimulus that could help projects like this, increasing the value of historic tax credits, for example. But I I'm sure that the hard costs of this property will be ten million dollars all day long. And that's just the hard costs. So that's the biggest challenge. And that's what, that's one of the reasons we wanted to come talk to you is like before we really spend the funding to get to in the time, we wanted to make sure that this is something that the community wanted. And we don't want to be in a position of having spent hundreds of thousands of dollars and then not be providing something that's supported, right?
Understood. Understood. Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Jen?
Nothing further.
Anybody knows any other sources of funding, please let us know. That is the biggest challenge.
Anybody else have a question? One of the other recommendations I was going to make is that you might want to reach out to Jamestown Renaissance Corporation. I happen to be on the board, but that's not the reason I'm recommending it. They, they have a. An urban core committee that is working with their new staff member Frank Bessie. To discuss things to do to turn around and revitalize downtown Jamestown. They just happen to have their office near Ellen or Crystal someplace up there. So might be a good idea to reach out to JRC and maybe even think about presenting to the board.
That'd be great.
Because they're working on turning around downtown and they're. Think that could be very helpful when there's other key people on that board. It would be good for you to talk with.
That's great. Yeah, we'll, we'll make that connection. I presume Crystal can introduce us and we'll make that connection. You know, if, if any, you know, we don't have to do some elaborate tour. If any of you are actually in the Rochester area anytime. And you want to see some of our work, just don't be shy about reaching out and we'll make sure you can go see something.
Is that possible to do even on a weekend like a Saturday?
I will absolutely meet anybody. Yeah, I do that quite often. In fact, it's probably easier.
Still working full time.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Anybody else on the commission have a question or a comment? Or anyone from the staff? Well, again, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, what?
I was just gonna say that. The guys from Home Leasing, they, they reached out really early and, and you know, obviously. As they're here presenting this early on, but we've been talking with them for a number of months now. And it's been a pleasure so far to to work with you guys. And you know, it's, it's, it's really exciting to me. I have. The arcade building is, is really important to me. From a planner perspective and a historic preservation kind of perspective. So I appreciate that you guys have have presented this and that, you know, we can continue to work together to. Hopefully come up with a project that is really supported by, by everyone. So I just wanted to say it's, it's been great working with you so far and. Just appreciate that you've, you've come to us so, so early on.
And, and I think one of the things we'll also do next is try to continue that conversation about mitigation. I don't know. How we do that, but I'm happy to put some thinking about it, maybe meet somebody and talk. At some point even just say, here's some ideas. And then you can react to them, you know. I'd rather just talk about it till we figure it out.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. We start talking about it now.
Yeah.
Sooner the better. Any of us, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
And Home Leasing just would like to say likewise, working with Crystal and Larry, it's been. It's been very helpful for all the insight shared of the, of the building and the history and everything. So we're very appreciative.
Yeah, and we work, you know, all across New York State. All we've got projects in Albany, Oswego, Owego, Schenectady, Syracuse, all, you know, Rochester. You guys have been really professional to work with and it's been helpful. It's, it's really not always that. I don't want to say easy, no project is easy, but productive, right? In terms of a partnership, trying to figure things out and just working good work.
Now you just have to work with the commission. We're a pretty ornery bunch, so. I, I, I mean that in the best possible way. I think I, everyone on this commission, I think hopefully they'll let me speak to them again, really cares. About our city and really cares about this building. And so some people have said. Worse things than ornery. But it's not because we're trying to make trouble. It's just that. I think we care so much that, and I think we do it professionally politely, but. You know, we're, we're. We care and I, you know, that's great. And I, and it's good that you care and I, and I know our staff cares, so.
Yeah, and I'd rather people just put all their things, their, their, their feelings and thoughts out on the table and we can talk with them. That's.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty good at that.
Yeah, we are too, so.
Okay, well, that should make it for a smooth project.
Anyway, well, thank you so much. Don't feel shy about reaching out if you have any questions.
Yeah, and then maybe we'll see about coming up to Rochester. But before we say goodbye to you, anybody else, staff, commissioners have questions, comments, concerns?
Not at this point.
Okay, well, thank you. And then could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Jeff Nelson. Can I go second, please?
Second.
Oh, who was second first?
It was Regina.
Thank you. So all in favor, please say aye.
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 The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.